Donate. I'm gonna say over 200 bottles of Lysol wipes and 87 bottles of a Lysol spray that I've distributed to first responders and I still have some here. If those first responders or courthouse maintenance needs it for disinfecting. And that, so that ends my portion. Valerie?
Valerie Cre here. I'd just like to say that. A big thanking to my health department, to Mike and to the coroner. Without all of us working together, this wouldn't have gotten done because it was like drinking water from a fire hose. We couldn't go fast enough. Luckily Joyce Yoder and myself had put back quite a bit of PPE. Prior to this, since 2009, so we had a lot to work off of at the beginning. I guess we didn't realize how much PPE they were gonna use. When you think about. One pair of gloves doesn't go far. You can't go from one thing to another without changing gloves, without changing masks. I've spent about $3,000 and I have about 3,000 more left in my account unfortunately. Most of the vendors now will not do invoices. It has to go on a credit card. Mike has used the credit card to get our PPE. And my grant, I have to invoice a lot of things, so. If we do find PPE, it's very expensive now. They've raised their prices because they can't get the materials, so obviously they have to raise their costs. Like Mike said, we are trying to get our PPE up and stocked for the next wave. At this point right now, we're up to seven. Positive cases. We still have other people that have been tested. We don't have results back on. Do you have any other questions? Trying to think off the top of my head, but Josh and I talked and. We just had, it's been overwhelming, the amount of phone calls, the amount of paperwork. Plus, we have a new lady that's trying to learn her job. She's been wonderful with the computer, as you can see, trying to get the computers to work. I had my, my computer completely crashed and I had to order another one. So my office has really helped me a lot, filing the papers, getting more supplies. Joyce Yoder did. She did get online, somebody from Indianapolis that makes hairspray, quit making hairspray and. They started making the gel hand sanitizer. So she emailed them. This weekend and Monday, they emailed her back and said they would give us 600 bottles if we could come to Indianapolis and pick it up. So that was a donation for us that we were greatly appreciative for. I have applied through the National Stockpile to get PPE. I got two small. Let's see, two weeks ago, I got a small order and just Tuesday, I got another small order from the state police. They dropped it off. It's been dispersed to St. E Healthcare and Carol Manor. Carol Manor has been amazing. They have stepped up and their deliveries do not come in the building. They drop them off. The girls go out, they wipe them down with Clorox wipes. Before they're ever brought into the building. The same with the mail, because we know this COVID is sticking to boxes to anything it can. The staff come in their street clothes, they get their, their scrubs, they change, they work all day into different shoes, scrubs. And they leave, they take their scrubs off, they change back into their street clothes and leave. Nothing comes into the building, nothing leaves the building. So we've been pretty lucky that our long-term care has not had any COVID like the other places in the national news right now. So I've been, they wipe everything down constantly and Mike was generous enough to get us some Clorox wipes. We finally got some in. But I, you know, 12 bottles of Clorox wipes are coming in at $800. It's just unreal what they're charging. But when you have to have it, you have to have it and they're going fast, so. We, we're working together, all of us. The health department's been wonderful, the coroner, she's, you know, doing everything she can. Mike is keeping on top of all the NIMs paperwork for us. The, the fire hose is starting to slowly stop running as fast as it was. The, we did have a COVID death in the county. So we made sure that all the court, all the funeral directors have been given Tyvek suits, shields, masks, gown, uh booties, head covers. Uh their goggles, their face shields, everything to keep them safe. And one thing about Carroll County. All of our funeral directors live in their business, so we want to make sure that their families are kept safe. Make sure that they're still doing the CDC guidance, but you know, more than 10 people, so. It's, it's a constant calling people all the time. The nurse is constantly on the phone, Joyce Yoder, calling people about their, how they're feeling, trying to get them back to work. Finding out where, where they are in their COVID. That the ISDH has so much paperwork, FEMA has so much paperwork for us to do. It's just trying to catch up with all of it. It's, it's taken a lot and it's taken a lot of hours and a lot of time to do this. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, this is Josh. So given that you've. Spent in a neighborhood of, is it about 12 or 13,000 dollars between the two of you so far on COVID related?
Yeah, so, yeah, so far it's, it's just shy of 13,000. I do have an order out for some more Tyveks. That will finally give us a little bit of a stock and when that comes in, it's probably gonna be 13.5. So that's about where we're setting that total between the two departments.
Okay. How, how much do you anticipate? Needing in the next, you know, say 60 days?
Well, I'm hoping that we finally hit a plateau and that this thing will slow down to where we. The, the PPE burn rate will become even slower. Maybe another 10 tops. I'm thinking right, and that's just the swag. That will give us. That'll give us enough to build a stockpile just in case we do have a second or third wave later on in the year.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Hey, Mike, this is Tim Radcliffe. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What is the shelf life for that PPE equipment?
So all, all of the, the different ones vary. The PPE that we had prior, it was distributed in, I believe it was 2009. During the Ebola outbreak. Those N95s and surgical masks were expired. However, CDC and ISDH said that we could use them anyway that. And that they're, I guess to answer your question, the average shelf life on the mask is I think a year and a half to two years. The Tyveks is a little bit longer. Gloves, I, I'm not, they just eventually dry rot, you know, so as long as I keep them sealed, they should be good.
However, the National Stockpile that I received was already outdated and that was what the SNS from. From our state sent me expired N95s, so they, they're not throwing anything away there. You use it regardless, so. Everything else is, you know, it, it's paper, so if it didn't fall apart, we're using it.
Okay, thank you.
No problems.
Does anybody have anything else for Valerie or I? Because if not, I'll, I'll go ahead and mute my phone. Okay, muting.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, um, next item, we have several additionals that were advertised for March. That includes free for the jail. One for the commissioners in the radio and equipment line. The coroner vehicle and then three for area plan. Would we like to tackle these by departments or by, yeah, by? Yeah, by department?
Sure, why not?
Alright, so the first one is the, the jail. Is, is there a motion for? The approval of the three claims that, well, I, I apologize. There's, there's also one for the recorder. Under ID security protection. So we can look at that one first. Is there a motion to approve or deny the additional for the recorder's office?
I'll make a motion. Ethan Brown?
Is that to approve or to deny?
Yes, sir, to approve.
Okay. Motion by Ethan Brown. Is there a second?
All riders, second.
All riders, second. Is there any discussion? Beth, are you still with us? Cameron, is Beth still with us? Oh, you're muted.
Area plan is muted. Come off mute.
Yes, I'm here.
Beth, is this? Can you speak to that one?
She did not have a budget enough for her. It's for the redaction of documents and she did not budget enough, so it, it's just a formality related. Used to be in her, so we can go ahead and pay. No, it's out of the ID security protection.
Oh, oh, yes, okay. I, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, is there any other discussion? Alright, all those, oh wait, sorry. So I will call for a vote. Brown?
Yay.
Radcliffe?
Yay.
Martin? You're muted, Tracy.
Yay.
Stoffer? You're muted, Doc. I'll, I'll come back to you, Doc. Ayers? Ryder?
Yay.
Stoffer?
Stoff, yay.
Alright, Plu, yay. So motion carries 7-0. Next on the agenda is the commissioners, jail project fund. The three lines are 49,600, 233,000, and 7,700 to Construction Control, Inc., Elevatus, and BFNS respectively. Is there a motion? Okay, a motion by Ethan Brown to approve. Is there a second?
Airs, next. Ayers, second.
Scott Ayers, second. Is there any discussion?
Is, is this for work that's already been completed, I assume? We have invoices for these?
Beth is muted.
Go ahead.
Yes, we have. We have invoices for a lot of it. Some of it for the Elevatus is more because instead of doing it every month and spending an advertisement, we just kind of put some more money in there. The instruction control is for three months, I believe, the $1,000 a month that he's been billing. Yes, we do have bills and, or we're going to receive them in the next month.
Is there any other discussion? Did she answer your question, Tim?
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Any other discussion on the motion? Alright, I'll call for a vote. Brown?
Yay.
Radcliffe?
Yay.
Martin?
Yay.
Stoffer, you're still muted, Doc. Ayers?
Yay.
Ryder?
Yay.
There you are, Doc.
Yes, Stoff, yay.
Alright, motion, and Plu, yay, motion carries 7-0. Next item is in the commissioners' budget for radios and equipment of 50,099.79. I got a call today from. Doug from EMS. He advised that as part of this, and, and just to back up, the, this, this number, the 50,899.79 is the balance from the. The radio repeater that we purchased last year. So that project came in under budget and this balance was the, the difference between. What was spent and what was appropriated. The, as a part of this, the, there will be additional radios purchased for backups and first responders and all three of the, I believe all three. Yeah, all three of the. The EMS garages will have 800 megahertz base stations. And that would give them the ability to be a. A, like a, in an, in an emergency, that can be a, a. Like an emergency response point. Having that communication equipment there, so just wanted to let everybody know that is what I found on that, but. Is there a motion, motion to approve or deny the radio equipment? Alright, I'm gonna say Tim Radcliffe with the motion. Is there a second?
Ayers, second.
Scott Ayers, seconds. Is there any discussion? Alright, seeing now, I'll call for a vote. Uh, Brown?
Yay.
Radcliffe?
Yay.
Martin? Stoffer?
Yay.
Ayers?
Yay.
Ryder?
Yay.
Plu, yay, motion carries 7-0. Next is the coroner vehicle. The amount is $60,000. Is there a motion to approve or deny or man?
Can I just make a comment real fast?
Josh?
Yes, or Beth?
Um, this was advertised, you had, I mean, on the agenda, it says from county general, but it has been advertised from the county general or Q and C.
Okay.
So we'll need to do that, so I wanted to make sure you had that.
Ethan, sorry, I.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine. I just wanted to ask you a quick question.
Sure.
Is there a way to, to lower it from 60,000? Because 60,000 seems like an awful lot for a vehicle, in my opinion. Also, another thing I'd like to add is, is there a way to specify the type of vehicle too? Because in my opinion, I don't think we need to have a truck for the coroner's office because. I would personally be mortified if one of my loved ones or my family member was loaded up in the bed of a truck after they just passed away. I think it's just more respectful if they're put in a van personally. That's just my two cents and what do you guys think?
Can I respond to that, Josh?
Yeah, if you could just hold on, Kristen, we, we don't have a motion on the floor yet.
I'm certainly in favor of a, of a vehicle, that's for sure. I just, 60,000 seems like an awful lot of money, so.
Yeah, so to answer your question, Ethan, any, it was advertised to 60,000, any amount can be approved. Uh, see that amount.
Yes, Dr.
Say it again, Doc.
Yes, Doc, I, I have a couple points to add there. Is normally when we purchase a vehicle, we're only going to do that state program or the state has an automatic bid and all. I would agree with Ethan, need a van rather than adding the whole. I'm, I'm in favor of a vehicle, but I, I'm not sure we're going to bounce this the right way.
I think when Kristen, when Kristen speaks, that she'll answer some of the questions of why it's so expensive and, and some of the stipulations that she is wanting. The reason she needs a truck and, so I think Kristen would answer those questions.
Alright, well, let's just hear from Kristen before we take a motion.
Thank you. So there's a couple things to this. It was up to 60,000. I sent out the quotes to everybody. And if there's three quotes with the state bid, which is these prices, the highest bid I have is 43,000. 43,257 and that was from Mann's. All those quotes include everything except for the decal. That's the lights, the top of the truck, and that includes the state bid prices. The reason I'm asking for a pickup versus a van is several reasons. One, this county needs four-wheel drive. I've had several instances where I have almost not made it to a scene due to. Our roads and hills and things. We have had to use the EMA truck before to get back to places. It separates myself and my staff from the bodies. Right now, we're in a high drug time and we can be exposed to the drug residue along with like, for say this, this coronavirus. Um, when we have a death right now, we would be in a van with the body breathing those. The residue and gases that can be put off from the body, so the, a, a truck would, would separate us from that and keep us from being exposed for long periods of time. Right now, we obviously go out of county for storage and if you are on like, say Burlington and we have to go away to Lafayette or White County, you're spending almost an hour in the back with, or in a vehicle. You know, like I said, that can overdose us, so it's for our safety. And the other reason would be, is the pickup truck you can clean and disinfect easily, where if you have a van, we have potential problems like we do now with the fabric. You cannot clean it and. Disinfect it for many things as easy as you can, a pickup truck. A lot of coroners are starting to go to pickup trucks for several reasons like this.
Can I say something real fast, from me?
Yeah.
Uh, is, would you be able to put like a sheet of plexiglass or something in between you and the person? If it was, say, a van or something like that, if we found a van that was four-wheel drive? Would that?
I don't know that it would sufficiently keep you from getting the residue and being exposed to like, say, this virus.
Okay, because I just, like, I know when you go to like grocery stores, they have the plexiglass there to protect you from the, the cashier and everything, so I didn't know if that would.
When you're, when you're alive, you, you can actually, like, if they're talking to you or if they cough or sneeze your way, those droplets can be exposed to you. When you're dead, they, they get exposed through the air, it's airborne. So if you did the plexiglass, you can't say it's not gonna go through. I mean, how are you gonna feel that off properly to know that you're not gonna get? That exposure.
And then also, is that floor able, the floor that's in your van currently, is that able to move?
Yes, I believe so. I need to make sure of that, but I think that JD told me it could.
Okay, thank you.
And Kristen?
I have a, I have a question. Kristen?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Stoff.
The only question I have, maybe a statement, it's Kristen, ask me if I'm wrong. Oftentimes, the coroner is used in a questionable death situation. If someone passes at nursing home or a hospital, isn't the undertaker that is in charge of the funeral, don't they typically make that pickup there and send the coroner?
It, it just depends. I mean, one, we don't have, we don't have a hospital, so we don't have to worry about that, but if it was like, say, Saney Healthcare. Um, I have actually had several calls to Saney Healthcare. We have certain guidelines we have to go to, go by to know if we need to do an autopsy or we don't. And if, if we are doing an autopsy or we investigate in any way, we have to transport. So, so far this year, we've had 15 calls. Only five of our calls have actually been where I can actually call the funeral home and ask them to come get them. The rest have all been investigations.
Okay, alright, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Kristen, Dr. Stone?
Go ahead, Doc.
Okay, you made some strong arguments there. I would bend towards a pickup truck with a provision that it had a fiberglass top or something over it. You've got strong sound arguments there. I would go with a pickup.
Yeah, the quote, the quote is for a fiberglass.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Kristen, have you, have you been in touch with vans lately? If we were to, I know when you buy vehicles, you can waggle back and forth and that. Do you think you could get it for a lower cost now with everything that's going on? If we went to them and said, we'll give you, say, 38,000? Have you, do you think that would be something we could do to see if we could get it a little bit cheaper now also? But I am in agreement that I think our coroner needs to have a updated vehicle and, and eventually a home.
I, I agree. I did ask, and if I remember correctly, and I, I will definitely ask again, I, I'm all for any discounts we can get, but if I remember correctly, the state bid is as low as we can get. And so far, all three of the dealers that I, I got quotes from were all within a couple thousand of each other. I know that it was mentioned, I believe, in the commission. I know that it was mentioned, I believe, in the Commissioners' meeting to, that they would like to see me keep it local. Um, I don't, I can always ask if they can go lower, um, but I, I can't guarantee that, but I'm, I'm happy to ask. I know that they said that the state bid was, the state, I mean, it was, the state bid was what it was. Now, granted, the, the money that they recommended was also for equipment, 'cause some of the equipment, um, has been taken over by mold, um, and like our cot is not functioning well, we've had trouble with it at several scenes. But I do have access to a new cot for about half the cost, um, so that was about five hundred dollars, so if you can, I like that I think we can get everything done for less than fifty. I was hoping for less than around forty. I, I, I can ask, I mean, like I said, I, all three are right there together and I don't know how that works, I'm, I don't know how it works for the state bid. I don't, I, I've never really dealt with buying cars, my husband does, but I mean, I can ask them and see what they said. But those were the quotes that they gave me and, and I believe they said that once, you know, the state bids as low as they can get it.
Do you have any feel for which, uh, brand you're gonna pick, and I, I know some are cheaper than others?
Um, I honestly don't care, uh, to me, I just, I would just like anything and be grateful for anything. The, let me look. That's what I was getting, I was saying, um, the, the, actually, the Ford was the cheapest, just by about two hundred dollars. Them and, them and Ford were both forty-one thousand, and Mann's was forty-three. Like I said, that included everything but the decal. I was, I can try to go with the cheapest, that one, like I said, isn't the local one, so.
I think we might have to leave it after the news.
I would prefer.
This is Doc, I think it's a local within the district, I think we're in a bad direction.
Yep, I agree.
All right, would, well, uh, would somebody want to make a motion with a specific number? For the approval?
I'll make a motion to approve up to forty-five thousand.
All right, motion by Ethan Brown for forty-five thousand.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Paul Ryder.
I'd rather, the motion, I'd rather see the figure at fifty thousand, need a little wiggle, a little there.
Okay, I can change it for motion.
And, and Doc, I will, I will agree with the fifty thousand dollar level.
So Ethan, are you withdrawing your motion for forty-five thousand and making a motion at fifty?
Yes, sir.
So the motion is for fifty thousand for Ethan Brown. Uh, Paul, do you second?
Yes, I do.
Okay, is there any discuss, um, that, the, um, the other thing we need to decide is whether we want to take this out of Q cap or out of, um, out of County General.
What do you recommend, Doc?
Well, typically, we have purchased vehicles out of Q cap, not always, but larger percentage of the time we have.
This is Doc, it's a pretty good size balance on the Q cap, I would be in favor of Q cap.
But, uh, question for Beth and Eric, uh, um, and because this is Q cap, do the Commissioners have to approve that before we approve that?
And, uh.
Who's that?
Uh, I, I don't really have an answer for you on that, I would assume that you can certainly approve it and if they, if they disagree, then I think you'd have to go back at it, but, um, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Uh, is Beth, and to try and end next?
Well, this is Beth, and I, uh, normally the Q cap is, um, budgeted and requested and approved, um, by the Commissioners and then approved by the, um, Council, so I am not exactly. But they are going to have a meeting on Monday, so you could just say pursuant to Commissioners' approval also.
Yeah, that, that'd certainly be fine, I mean, as long as they agree, there's no problem at all. If it's usually bought from Q cap, I don't know why they wouldn't approve this one.
Uh, Ethan, is that okay?
That's my motion.
That's your motion, very good. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
This Doc, I second it.
So, by Monday?
Tracy?
So, I'm looking at Mann's estimate and it's coming to total price of forty-five, eight oh five. How much more after that, Kristen, do you see is gonna have to be put into the forty-five oh five or? This morning, I came up with forty-three, two fifty-seven, and that was, the bid for the truck was thirty-four, seven fifty-four, ten. And then, um, they, I went off of the topper that went with the Fletcher's, which was, um, move over Outfitters because it was Lafayette versus going to Indianapolis. And their quote was eighty-five oh three, so if I added it correctly, I got forty-three, two fifty-seven. So the fifty, so the fifty-five oh three is just for the topper? That was the fifty, hold on, where, where do you see that? I'm just asking, you said you're gonna have to have lights, decals, toppers. The lights are, no, everything's included in that except for the decal, that's the only thing that's not included. So, you're saying it's thirty-four, seven fifty, it's instead of the forty-five that's on the estimate? Yeah, 'cause the state gives you eighty-five hundred off. Um, the, if, if he had handwritten on the front page, that hope should have come through. Forty-three, two fifty-four, ten was, was his total, and then he had eighty-five hundred for the state bid off, so it came to thirty-four, seven fifty-four, ten. So that, the total cost and the only other addition is you're gonna need a decal? Well, that, the thirty-four is just for the truck, and then the topper and the lights and everything was an additional five oh three. So together, that came to forty-three, two fifty-seven, ten. And then that's it, that would be everything except for a decal. And do we have to do that right away? No, I mean, that could wait. Well, I'm just trying to, so if we did fifty thousand, then that should, you should, you should be able to get the whole package and. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion? All right, I will call for a vote, uh, Brown?
Yes, yay.
Radcliffe?
Yay.
Martin?
Yay.
Stoffer?
Yay.
Ayers?
Yay.
Ryder?
Yay.
Plu, yay, motion carries seven zero. Uh, last item is area plan, uh, this is for the, um, three items, fifteen hundred for repair and maintenance, thousand for fuel, and seven hundred for insurance, uh, for the vehicle that was, approved by the Commissioners to be used for the, the area plan, previously a sheriff's vehicle.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Ethan Brown? Is there a second? Seconded by Larry Stoffer. Any discussion? All right, I'll, uh, uh, call for a vote, Brown?
Yay.
Martin?
Yay.
Radcliffe?
Yay.
Stoffer?
Yay.
Ayers?
Yay.
Ryder?
Yay.
Plu, yay, motion carries seven zero. Okay. Additionals to be advertised, uh, is there any objection, uh, to advertising, uh, the highway for three hundred and thirty-three thousand? All right, we will advertise that by consensus. Uh, and then the, the other advertising that we need to consider would be for EMA, if we wanted to advertise an amount so that we could, uh, appropriate that at a, at a future time, uh, for COVID response. The amount that he said was either ten or fifteen thousand dollars.
I'd like to make a motion to advertise fifteen thousand.
Tracy?
Do you want, do we want to, uh, go ahead and advertise for up to twenty thousand in case we do have a second and third wave?
I think that would be entirely appropriate, we can advertise it, we don't have to spend it. And that way, it's there if we need it, and if we have to call an emergency session, you know, the Commissioners have taken action as well. That gives a lot of leeway for the departments to, for, for response, but I think, you know, it's incumbent for us to be, uh, prepared and, um, by, uh, you know, putting that in the budget, it just keeps the numbers to where we know what the, where we are on an ongoing basis.
This is Doc, I would be opposed that at twenty-five thousand, we don't have to spend it, we sure don't have to spend it, but I'd lean towards twenty-five.
Is there any objection to advertising this, uh, for at twenty-five thousand?
No.
All right, so by consensus, we will advertise that for twenty-five thousand, Beth? Um, that would be in the, uh, that would be EMA, uh, expendables.
So County General?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any other member that would like to address anything?
I, I would like to, uh, see what it would take to get, uh, Justin Shagley paid for his, what would he be corrected? Do you know the answer, Josh?
Uh, well, I think Beth can speak to that better, the, the, what we have to have a definitive response from, I think both from Eric and from our HR advisor is what our liability is in the future if that grant, uh, no longer comes through, if we have an obligation to pay down at that level or if we suggested at that time. Is that, was that, is that a fair synopsis, Beth, of what your concern was?
Yeah, our inspection for that it cannot be taken away if the grant was not received. So, um, I can send that information to Eric and get it, let Erica look at it also, that'd be a good idea.
That sounds great.